Call City Council meeting in order, roll call please.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Quorum being present, would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 19th, 2008, and July 10th, 2008?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, Alderman, favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Bills, Alderman Wesley?
I'll make a motion, pay the bills, $499,938.52.
Second.
That is my motion.
On the question, roll call.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Caddella.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the City Council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, please. Hearing none, I do have one written communique by email addressed to Mayor Johnson. We are residents of Wooddale and would like to thank you for your support at the Wooddale Sounds of Summer. My family, relatives, and friends have attended the last two concerts and look forward to the next two. It seems to be getting better each year. This year, the entertainment has been great, and our kids love the Touch the Truck. We were so glad to have the great food and refreshments available. Sincerely, Jeff and Lynn Zurumba. Nuncio, job well done, you and your committee. Anyone wish to address the City Council this evening? If not, Frankie, would you join me at the podium? In fact, why don't we bring your parents up too and give them a little airtime up here? Frankie Pichet just finished his Eagle Scout project, and before we give him this plaque one, should tell us a little bit about what your project was.
For my Eagle project, I restored car paths at Salt Creek Golf Course. I laid fresh mulch and put in railroad ties. And the railroad ties are put in to help golfers with their safety because they couldn't cut across greens or fairways anymore.
Okay, why don't you tell us a little bit about some of the badges that you had to achieve to get the rank of Eagle Scout, and maybe some of the trips you went on? You go up the Boundary Waters?
Yeah, well, I've done numerous trips with Boy Scouts from hiking the Grand Canyon to canoeing the Boundary Waters, whitewater rafting in West Virginia. I had to get a lot of merit badges to become Eagle Scout from first aid, cooking, camping, just a bunch of different things that really not, or it's really useful enough.
Frankie, this is from the Chief of Police, so if you can figure out how to carry this in your squad, I mean, in your car at all times, that might be helpful. You never know when you might need to pull this out. Presented to Francis O'Toole Pichet, having achieved the Boy Scout of America's highest, and your Court of Honor is at Holy Ghost, Sunday, 3:00. Having achieved the Boy Scouts of America highest award, the Eagle Scout, you are hereby presented this recognition from the Wooddale Police Department for your dedication to the Eagle Scout requirements for achievement. You have exhibited an interest, a loyalty, and a caring for your country, community, and your fellow man. Further, you are recognized for having dedicated yourself to the principles to obtain the highest achievement, and in doing so have developed the necessary leadership skills which through example have set the pace for other young men to follow in your footsteps. We are confident that you will continue to apply these leadership skills and Eagle Scout principles to your life as you embark on new horizons embracing the morals and merits you have so eloquently received. We take pride in recognizing you for this outstanding achievement, and on behalf of the men and women of the Wooddale Police Department, our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes for future achievement in all that you strive for dated the 20th of July 2008 by Frank Benowitz, Chief of Police, City of Wooddale. Congratulations to you. And that brings us to a presentation from three parties. The City of Wooddale is considering installation of a red light photo enforcement on the corner of Thorndale and Wooddale Road. And present from DuPage County Board, our DuPage County Board Representative who's doing a great job, Paul Fichtner. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor, Alderman.
You might need to pull that a little closer, and hopefully that's on. Mr. Clicker's checking.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for the phone call. I know this is a very important issue for you, and I'm glad to discuss the status of this issue within the county's Transportation Committee. And again, you know, as a former Alderman in the city of Elmhurst, I know how important traffic safety is. Also, I'm a member of the Transportation Committee and the Judicial and Public Safety Committee at the county, where we hear stories at least once a week about traffic situations, accidents that occur. So I, along with all the county board members, do take traffic safety very seriously, and at the county, we're trying to work out a policy regarding these red light cameras. Again, my name is Paul Fichtner. I'm one of three representatives from District One. I reside in Elmhurst. At the county board, I sit on the Judicial, Stormwater, Public Works, and Transportation Committee. I'm happy to be here tonight to bring you up to date on the policy the county is potentially adopting for red light cameras on county road intersections. This is obviously different than intersections that municipalities fully control, or intersections that the state allows the municipalities to control in terms of red light cameras. At this point in time, the City of Wooddale can put up those red light cameras anytime they want on many intersections in the community. The county is taking a slower approach in adopting a policy for red light cameras. As I go through my presentation, it'll become apparent why. I am one of five members of the Transportation Committee. I'm not the chairman, I'm not the vice chairman, and I can assure you, there's a lot of people on the committee that have very different opinions about how to proceed on this red light camera issue. There's a lot to be considered in it. I am not against red light cameras. My personal view is one that I believe red light cameras are important. They should be installed, but only after all efforts have been made to make that particular intersection as safe as possible short of a red light camera. DuPage County, if it adopts a red light camera policy, will be a very, very early adopter for counties for red light cameras policies. In fact, the latest information I have is that Cook County is the only one county in the region that has a red light camera policy. DuPage, it's under review. Kane County, they're not planning any installations. Lake County, it's under review. McHenry County, the county is not planning any installations. And Will County, it's under review. So the length of time and the slowness that DuPage County has perceived in going through this red light camera issue is pretty much par for the course. There's a lot of counties that are still reviewing this. So we're not ahead of the curve, we're not really behind it. And again, that's the latest information Another thing I do want to clarify too about the red light cameras as it pertains to DuPage County is there is no intersection in DuPage County that currently has a red light camera that involves a county road. My understanding from some comments I've heard is that other parts of the county are doing it, why can't my community? And the fact is that there are no red light cameras up and running. Like I said, we haven't even devised the policy yet, so I wanted to clarify that. The Transportation Committee, all five members agreed that the transportation staff should look at red light cameras the following way. Well, first let me describe the IDOT policy. The IDOT policy, which could be adopted by the county, is one that requires basically five accidents, and then you can get a red light camera if you want one. The committee decided to take a further approach to that five accident rule and look at two factors. One is the accident rate. So five accidents with a million cars per year going through an intersection versus five accidents with 100,000 cars a year going through an intersection are two completely different safety problems. And the blanket "five accidents covers all" policy is something the committee decided needs to be tweaked a little bit to take into consideration the accident rate. Also, the accident severity. Five deaths at an intersection per year is a lot different than five fender benders. So we're taking a very important, logical approach to determine what is a dangerous intersection, and we're ranking those intersections through the accident rate and the accident severity. We're also then looking at what other changes could possibly made to that intersection short of getting a red light camera. Other changes that could be made include better striping, a different change to the yellow timing or the all-red timing, and that in particular is being looked at as well. Another situation that the committee is facing, and if anything is going to sink a potential red light camera issue at the county, it's going to be this issue, not who should get it, what accident rate, severity, ranking, et cetera. It's a topic brought up by, out of the blue, by another member of the committee that has caught on pretty well, and that's called revenue sharing. County road, the county should get some or shouldn't they? That's what we're debating. And when you look at it from your perspective, if you're going to put up a red light camera, and you're only getting 50% of the revenue, that revenue model changes, although revenue is not the reason you're putting up the red light camera. That is a consideration because I'm sure you just want to break even as well. Also, other potential issues in the policy we're considering is a sunset clause. If there's no improvement in rates of accidents over a specified period of time, the red light camera could or should be removed. That was brought up. And warning tickets for the first few months for residents to give them a chance to realize the red light cameras there, that your community is serious about it, and for them to take appropriate action to not run through the red lights. Now, I don't come empty-handed. We have looked at my behest through an agreement at the Transportation Committee to refer the intersection that is most important to you, Thorndale and Wooddale, to our Transportation Department to look at it and tell us what is going on at that intersection in terms of safety. He came back with some interesting results that they're immediately fixing, and that including, that's including that they're adding, well, I'll start with the stop bar. I know you can't really see this, but it's a four corner.
Actually, we do have the ability to do that, Mr. Clicker, and then everybody at home and in the audience and us can, if we can put it on the screen.
And I'll continue on in the meantime.
Sure.
There's some clearance time to the left turn movements that were made at that intersection to improve the ability for cars to get through that. Four eastbound trucks, when we came out and looked at it, were making an illegal left turn into the diesel gas station just east of the intersection during an hour's viewing of operation. And those turning trucks backed eastbound traffic through the intersection, requiring those motorists to wait two cycles of the signal to clear the intersection. And the intersection is posted with no turn signs that could be made bigger per thoughts of our Highway Department. And the ability to improve that part of the intersection should go a long way for added safety as well. And what you'll see here in a moment is that the stop bar for northbound traffic on the south leg is located much further away from the intersection than the other stop bars. And the stop bar should be moved 25 feet closer to the intersection, allowing turning traffic to complete the movement with the allotted clearance interval. Again, this backs up traffic. People get frustrated because they have to wait an extra cycle of light, and it causes red light violations and safety hazard to go through that. So those are some of the things that the county, the action that the county is taking to improve the safety of that intersection as we speak, after coming out and reviewing it. Something else I want to make available to you, if you don't know this already, is that there are four intersections in Wooddale that a red light camera can be put up in tomorrow. And those are under the influence of the IDOT policy, and those are IDOT roads. Irving Park and Wooddale Road, Irving Park and Addison, Irving Park and Prospect, and Route 83 and Grove. Now, something you might want to consider about these intersections is that Irving Park and Addison Road has a vehicle safety record for that intersection that is twice as bad as Wooddale and Thorndale. You have twice the safety problem at Irving Park and Addison as you do at Thorndale and Wooddale. 83 and Grove, you have a 50% worse safety record at that intersection, Route 83 and Grove, than you do at this important intersection of Wooddale and Thorndale. You can put red light cameras tomorrow on those intersections. So while the county is determining what's best to do for the 800 intersections in the county under our jurisdiction, we know that all the communities are looking at their individual intersections as well. So I'd like to answer questions at the end of this, but to conclude, the policy that's currently taking place is designed to take into consideration the accident rate and the severity to rank those intersections. And we have made improvements to the intersection at Wooddale and Thorndale, as I mentioned before. And you could put a red light camera up tomorrow at three intersections in the community, two of which have 50 to 100% worse safety records than Wooddale and Thorndale. So please bear with the county. We are, again, early adopters to this. Like I said, most counties are still looking at this, so, and have not put any red light cameras in on county properties. So I appreciate your thoughts on that. And here is, just to point out.
Paul, if you would take the microphone with you.
Right here, as you can see, this white line down here, and you know what it's like to make a turn on one of these. Notice the white line here, notice the white line here, here. This one is woefully bad, and this is causing multiple accidents at this intersection. So we're going to be moving this up, as well as adjusted timing signals as well, and that should go a long way to solving the safety problem at this intersection, and we'll be monitoring that. Also, just for your information, the Wooddale and Thorndale intersection is ranked 170th unsafe out of 838 roads. So there's 169 other intersections that are less safe than Wooddale and Thorndale. And it's a concern to some on the committee that we do this in a fashion that does the best possible policy for all the intersections collectively at this time. I'd like to answer any questions, but like I said, I'm very aware of safety issues, having been in Alderman and Elmhurst, and we're doing our best that we can at this council. And please feel free to call the other members of the Transportation Committee as well. You'll find that there's a lot of cross-currents going on with the potential adoption of this policy. So that's how it stands right now, and please ask any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fichtner, but I think we'll hear from all three presenters, so we have all the facts in front of us before we open up for questions. And the next presenter is Barbara Roberts, representing the vendor ACS. You can either use that podium, or you can come here to the table, whichever you prefer.
This will be fine, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor, and honorable members of council for allowing me to speak today. My name is Barbara Roberts, and I've actually been in this market since the very first red light camera was ever installed in New York City in the late 80s. So I've been around this market for quite some time, and in that time, I've seen many changes in technologies, and I've seen, I've seen the market just explode across the country because there are so many places all across the country that have currently adopted the technology. And I've also seen, I've also seen it from a very personal perspective. As you can imagine, through the years, I've encountered many people who have been, who've been personally affected by red light running accidents, either through maiming, or through crippling, or by losing a loved one, whether that be a son or a daughter. Because these accidents are heinous. And when you're talking about a red light running accident, you're talking about a vehicle where the most, or the greatest incident of your accident is going to be a right angle accident. So that means you've got a, you've got a, you know, vehicle smashing into your, into your driver's, into your driver's seat. So the issues that are related from death accident are extremely, are extremely difficult. In fact, it even gets more personal for me in that my husband was in a red light running accident, and not only was his career at that time shattered, but his knee as well was shattered. So anyway, and it never gets easier, even as the years go by, thinking about this stuff. There were a couple of points that were made. First, our company actually worked about four years with the state, looking to get this legislation put into place. And for the greatest degree, we've structured the legislation so that it is, it is very much geared to public safety. It's not geared around some bounty hunting and people just trying to make a lot of money on this. It really is geared for, for public and traffic safety. Some of the, you know, what we've seen since the legislation has been put forward is that, and no disrespect to Mr. Fichtner, but actually, multiple counties have moved forward and have passed, and have passed standard operating procedures to move forward. We're currently working with McHenry County, who's passed. Kane has also passed. Will has passed, and we're actively working with IDOT as well. And IDOT is, they've passed their standard operating procedures, and many of the counties have actually just been mirroring the IDOT procedures as they move forward. And they put forward very strict justifications. They don't allow you to just put these cameras anywhere. You have to have a very serious problem. One of the things that we've done with this particular intersection in question at Wooddale is we have gone out and have done very specific video validation surveys to get a sense from a data perspective, is there a problem? I mean, in working with the police department, we always know that we can look at crash data, we can look at the number of ticket, tickets that have been issued, and we even wanted to buttress that further with video validation to see just how many violations. With, with the counts that we've looked at, somewhat conservatively, we project that you'll still continue to see between 300 and, say, 380 violations, cited violations, a month on this, on this intersection. You've got a very serious problem at this intersection that I think needs, needs serious consideration in terms of a solution. One of the, one of the points that commonly comes up in looking at, at whether to put a camera or whether to make other changes, and we advocate that the whole picture be looked at, because from our perspective, it doesn't do any good just to put in a camera and think that it's going to make some money, because that is, that is the worst approach to take, because it's a, it's a very expensive endeavor. So you really want to only implement the solutions where there is indeed a problem. And so, so with the change in the yellow timing or, or different things like that, yes, we advocate that things be done, and I, and I am pleased that the county is looking at those elements. But, but we've also seen other cases as well in different contracts across the country. And there's even, the federal government has a, has a, an arm called IIHS that's done some studies, and there's even a study in Philadelphia where even after making all those changes, when they put in the red light cameras, they still saw an 87% drop in the red light violations. It is still one of those elements where, from a police perspective, these violations are extremely difficult for people to, for people to enforce. Because if somebody's going through a red light, then it's very difficult for the officers to go behind them because you've got oncoming traffic. So oftentimes, you end up being, being left with having to put a double officer squad out there to combat and to really treat this problem in, in those problem areas. It makes a lot of sense to let technology supplement law enforcement and do the work for them. So, yeah. If you had any questions, I, I'm chock full of some experience in this marketplace. I'd be more than happy to answer.
Again, I'll wait until all three presenters have
That's fine.
made their statements. I think next is Stacy Grinchus, which I may be mispronouncing apparently.
You were close enough, that's okay. My name is Stacy. I'm actually here on behalf of Charlie Woolley. She couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to read her statement just as she wrote it. My name is Charlie Woolley, and I would like to thank Mayor Johnson, Chief Benowitz, and the City Council for allowing me to speak this evening. Each year, I award the top cop awards for DUI arrests from AIM, the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists, to the officers of Wooddale. I was a victim's advocate for AIM, but since I moved out of the area, I do volunteer work and speak at impact panels for AIM. As many of you know, my stepson Eric Woolley was killed in an auto crash at the intersection of Wooddale and Thorndale Roads on June 16th, 2000. It was just a little before 9:00 AM when Eric was attempting to make a left turn onto Tone on his way to work. That morning, his father Jerry was approaching the intersection from Tone when he saw Eric's bright blue Camaro waiting to make the turn. Jerry thought he would honk and wave to Eric as they passed each other. Jerry looked away for a split second from Eric's car and heard the sound of crashing metal. When he looked back, he was horrified to see Eric's car up over the curb, on the grass, in front of the mobile station. It was crushed from the impact of a semi truck being driven at 60 miles per hour going through a red light. Jerry rushed to Eric to find he was still breathing and told him to hold on, that everything was going to be okay. Imagine your child in a horrific crash, and you were there. How would you feel? Knowing my husband was at that intersection and witnessed the aftermath of the crash causes my heart to ache. I am grateful that he was able to be with Eric and comfort him during his final moments here on earth. I know in my heart that Eric heard his dad's voice saying that I love you that day, and felt great comfort in hearing it and feeling his dad's love surround him. Eric was 17 years old at the time of his death. He had been in scouting since he was six as a Tiger Scout. He earned his Eagle Scout at the age of 12 in 1995. He had over 100 merit badges. He was a member of the Lakota Lodge Executive Board and Senior Patrol Leader for Troop 392 and Chapter Chief of Pathfinder District Order of the Arrow. He and his father received He and his father received the Vigil Honor of Order of the Arrow, the highest honor a scout or scout leader can achieve. Jerry was the scout master for Troop 392, which Eric and his younger brother Nick both attended. Three weeks before his death, Eric completed a fireball project which seeded 400 people at Camp Nappawan in Wild Rose, Wisconsin. He completed this project in one weekend with the help of fellow scouts and scout leaders. He was also a gifted swimmer, swimming on the Park District Teams and the Conant High School Varsity Team for four years. In his senior year, the Cougar... in his senior year, the Cougar were undefeated and placed first in conference. He was co-captain and co-MVP the last two years. He swam in conference sectionals, state finals, and journal nationals, junior nationals, usually bettering his time. He had a full scholarship to SIU and was the starter on their swim team. That was all ended by a careless and senseless act of an impaired driver. It took over three and a half years before the driver was convicted and sentenced to 14 years in prison. He has served 85% of the time with no time off for good behavior. We attended court at least once a month in those three and a half years, always walking away distressed and feeling the pain of the crash and loss of Eric's life. Had there been a red light camera at that intersection that day, questions would have been answered immediately from the footage caught by the camera. Thousands of dollars would have been saved by not having to go to court each month for over three years. This is a very dangerous intersection. Trucks and cars blow through the red lights on a regular basis. We are at the site often, and I can't tell you how many times I have watched this happen. Red light cameras aid the police, the city, the county. When people are aware of the red light cameras, they have a tendency of being more cautious. They don't want a ticket. Early next month, a red light camera is being installed in Roselle at Gary Avenue and Lake Street. Roselle will be joining over 50 Chicago-area communities by installing a red light camera at a busy intersection. Lisle, Carroll Stream, and Warrenville have already installed cameras. Palatine, South Algen, Villa Park, Lake Zurich, and Round Lake Beach, just to name a few, are looking to install red light cameras. Red light cameras help free up the police officers to patrol neighborhoods and be dispatched on other calls where they are needed. My understanding is the City of Wooddale is absorbing the cost for the camera and the maintenance. Approval is needed by the county board to issue the permit. What are we waiting for? Do we need to have more families go through the tragedy that we did? Do we need more people to die or be severely injured? My answers to those questions are no. My family and I support the red light camera here in Wooddale, and I am ready to do whatever it takes to get that in place. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. If I could have all three...